I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody's got the meeting minutes for March 19th to 23rd. Any questions or concerns, comments?
Motion to approve and suspend the meeting.
Motion by Wolf to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. All in favor say aye. All the same sign. Mr. Hack. Approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Changes or additions? Girls, are you on the agenda, or just here to?
No, it's just here.
Okay, good. Welcome. I think motion to approve the agenda. So, motion by Pillar to approve the agenda. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda as printed, say aye. Aye. All the same sign. Thank you. Five A, 2018 Street Project. Mark, come line up. Mark's got things ready to go for us with the change order too. Or?
No, not it.
Nothing. What do you have?
What I have, okay, start off with these are the contracts for the project. Awaiting your signature. The contractor has already signed them. We've got all their bond and insurance information. So, I don't know if you need a motion to sign them. I think you may have already approved.
We have approved these already now.
So, if you could sign those, then city will keep one cot, people keep one, and we'll give one to the contractor.
Okay.
So, that's that. Last week, Monty had contacted us. There was a couple of areas in town that wanted us to take a look at. And we had an engineer out here on Thursday, I think with Dave and Walker. Okay, walking around to a couple of places. So, what we should have is a copy of the estimate. What we did with each of these four areas is we assumed that a contractor for the street project would do the work. So, you'll see there's a minimum total there. We were using his unit prices for all those items. If you choose not to use them and go another route, we're showing what we're calling potential unit prices. So, what we're basically saying is that if you, I think, it's gonna be a whole lot more cost effective if you just utilize a contractor's or the entire. Now, these are our estimates. If you did want them to include this with the project, we would have to solicit a proposal from them to, you know, get the numbers. But this is, uh, these are the numbers that we came up with for each of those four areas.
Yeah, you know, maybe if you'd just explain to us these, these are just the first three objects here.
Okay. The storm sewer across from City Hall. This was the, this is what Monty had contacted us about initially. It was wherever.
Right across.
Right across this way. It looked like the inlet was kinda caving in, and I guess they've got that honed off now and marked. So, um, so what we'd be looking to do, what this is for would be basically to get a new inlet in there. So, you'd have some asphalt removal, curb and gutter, and then I think we had one length of pipe that we would, that we would have installed and connect into the, into the new inlet.
So, that project, you're looking at sixty, six hundred bucks?
Right.
Okay.
Then the sanitary sewer near Rough Rider. That one has water getting in underneath the pavement into the side of the structure there. And so, what this would entail would be removing the concrete around the, around the area of the manhole, putting in a riser, because right now it's just constructed out of masonry block, and that's where the water's coming through. So, um, so this would be to install a new riser on that portion of the manhole and then patch everything up with the asphalt. The sanitary sewer on Fifth and Third Avenue, as I understand it, that lid just keeps popping up. The one on Third Avenue, yeah. It's not the right lid for the ring. It's not available. And welding shop, we're gonna do some welding, try to do some repair work to keep, keep it from jumping out of place. But we thought we'd have you guys look at that, the street project, if there's going to be fixing or anything. Yeah, so basically what that would entail would be a new casting in there. Similar thing, remove the paint, the concrete that's around there, put in a new casting, put it all back together.
So, Mark, I guess, like, you don't think, I guess, like, we could, we could, I guess, like, make a new cover or something?
I don't know what all capabilities you have available. I mean, um...
Well, even if we're to go up to, I guess, like, some other, you know, like welding shop or, like, fabrication shop?
I suppose you could. From what I understand, that casting is pretty old and that, you know, they don't make those anymore. So, I don't know really what shape the casting itself is in, but, um...
David, if we had three come up there and look at it closely?
I don't know if he looked at it. You'd have to ask Dick on that. Dick is a little more aware of those two parts than I am.
We've got a torch at the shop, don't we?
Yeah. I know it's not the right cover. This been done before with it chiseled out some, some cutting on.
I think that that was the direction originally, is we were gonna see about having pre-cast up or, or create a new cover for us that would be down there.
Right, but if we've got a torch, we can buy the robot here and light it and torch herself. I can torch around circle, I guess.
Well, you're dealing with cast iron. It's not steel or whatever.
Can we, can we do steel?
Yeah.
But we'd have to chisel it all, cut the concrete to get that out there to fabricate a steel ring.
Well, no.
No, 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 a cover itself to go into the cast.
Just leave the ring there.
Leave the ring there.
Let's have Free take a good look at it.
Have Free take a look at it. I mean, it's the big, it's not on the big, big manhole.
Right. Of course, maybe it's a liability deal too.
Well, that's the other thing.
It would have to be heavy, because you don't, you know, anything made out of light steel or whatever, or van, nor the traffic would jump on. I mean, that cast covers are pretty heavy for a reason. It withstands vibrating, so they don't jump out of the window. We just had a look at it, being the engineer was in town that day.
Sure. David, you can have that free, please, and have them give us a yes, I can do this, no, I can't type thing. And, you know, it's gotta be that thick heavy stuff, so... I think we probably do it for half that, probably. Not less. With those other items, the storm sewer across over here, and then by Rough Rider, I think we have to get done right away. We're doing this street project over all right now. Why wouldn't we do that right after that? So, these braces, they don't seem ridiculous to me. And who knows what's gonna happen if we ask an individual contractor just to come in and do individual projects.
But the next step would be then to, to get official quotes from the contractor.
Request proposals.
Yeah.
Is that what you want us to do?
I think so. What do you guys think?
Yeah.
And why don't, why don't we have it done for all four of those? And then we can, we can compare to see what Free would do. And if, if it turns out that that's less expensive and, and look professional and everything like that, we can just exclude that then from our path forward with the contractor.
Sure.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion then?
I think we should make a motion.
Okay, make a motion that we go ahead and direct more engineering to seek out quotes from the awarded contractor for these four additions.
Okay, a motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Rule call.
Pillar. Aye. Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye.
Motion, Gary. You, Mark?
Are you familiar with the sidewalk over by Rough Rider?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's that. And then also, before you is Task Order Amendment for the construction.
That's not a change order, Task Order. Get ahead myself, but...
So, this is, um, this is provide the construction-based services group of projects. A lot of it is hourly, so if the contractor's not working that much, or there's hours are needed, and of course, city doesn't care. I tried to show you the entire breakdown there of how those numbers were aligned on, so if you have any questions. I could steer you up, let me set teams up.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I can read these.
And we'd be looking at weekly update meetings, or?
Yes, weekly construction meetings. And then, of course, to add something to each of the commission meetings.
Okay, we need a motion for this, Mark? Okay. We need a motion for the amendment.
So?
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. Rule call.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion, Gary. Mark, when do you think the pre-con meeting would be, and when do they wanna get on site? And I know the weather's been...
Yeah, well, the initial plan for them to get on site is mid-May, probably between the 10th and 15th, is what they had indicated, I guess, a couple of weeks ago. So, um, we would figure on having a pre-con probably at the end of this month. And then, um, you know, sometime right after that, before they start, it would be a public notification.
Any other questions from Mark? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Down to six A. Sign installation at Senior Center, we'll make sure we give us through Weidrich's name in the paper, so his constituents know he's doing a good job for him.
We are here.
You wanna come up here, or you wanna stay there?
I'll take it up. Go ahead. We are...
I just signed a sign, and we had somebody come in here, build a new sign up there. And then we think it's very beautiful, and we've had fundraisers, so we got some of the money. But we need some help from you guys, because we're gonna, right now, all we got is a twenty-four by thirty sign sent back. People don't even see it. When you look at this, you'll see that people will see it. And there will be solar lights above the bike棚. It looks like where it's right in front of the building there, that's how it's gonna look. But it's all in that long area.
Oh, boy, that's nice.
Very nice. And another thing, do we need an easement to put that sign on that property, because it is city property? Or since we have a sign, is that okay?
Question. I don't think we need, I don't think we need easement for that. It's our property. They wanna know if they need easement to put that sign on. No.
And then as far as insurance, is our insurance gonna cover, or is it, since it's on the city property, the city insurance cover that? I would think it'd be ours.
I don't, I don't know. Who's insur, whose insurance covers that?
It would be, it would be yours.
Okay, that's, that's, that's the only question I have.
You said you need help, Hilmer. Help to me means many different things. What do you need for help?
Two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars.
What's the total cost of the sign?
About twenty-three, twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand dollars for the entire sign?
Installed. Installed, every note. Two fire poles with a solar lighting on top, so when I take the sign out.
Is that gold plated?
That's me, that's me, not a telephone. It's, it's not brick. Brick would be about another, at least another, I'd say probably about six, seven thousand more. And those letters are all molded into it. They don't get screwed on. You know, they never change.
It seems like a lot to me, actually, for a sign for the senior center.
Well, probably yes, but if we don't do something pretty soon, we, we just stuck a lot of money in last with the ceiling, fix the ceiling, the air conditioning, we've done about...
Those are essentials.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But if we, if we don't have a sign, so people know where it's at, how are they gonna know where to go?
Who doesn't know where it's at?
Well, have you been there yet?
I've been there twice.
What, you've been, have you been there?
It's, I, I, I just, I guess it's beautiful. I, I, I think it'd be a nice enhancement. Twenty-two thousand dollars is a lot of darn money, and, and that's a lot of flesh people you guys are selling for fundraisers. So, I, I would, personally, and I'm not speaking for anybody but myself, I would think you could find a lot better use for twenty-two thousand dollars in your facility than this sign. I, I'd love to help you, Hilmer, and, you know, I'd be willing to give you some money, if, if everybody blesses it. But you guys, in the last ten years, you guys have had a lot of needs and necessities and...
Nobody ever done anything, so?
I know, I know.
Nobody ever did anything.
You know, with the parking lot and...
Well, it just kept falling worse, getting worse and worse, and costs were getting more and more.
Yeah. You know the new sign that was put out by Senex, that's welcome to Hazen sign? Boy Scout built that for us, and he did it for under ten thousand dollars with donations. And that's a very nice sign with brick. So, I, what do you guys, I haven't quit talking. What are you guys' thoughts? Oh, but I think it's great to see you guys, I mean, you know, taking this, like, pride, you know?
Pride, and it always looks a lot nice, too.
And, I mean, you know, go through this work, you know, bring it to us, you know, and, you know, anyways, what you're asking from us is, is kind of like minimal, you know, in that price, you know? I guess in three years, I wouldn't want you coming back saying, we need new windows. We need five thousand dollars remaining.
Windows, we checked, they're all, none of them are cracked.
You know what I'm saying. You know what I'm saying.
No, it's, so far, they're good. We put new shades on it this year, and, uh, right now, we're working on getting all the bright lights in it, which we're doing on our own. We spend a lot of money on our own funds.
Now, you, obviously, no. So, are you asking for a specific dollar?
Well, when, when you go ask for money, what do you?
I ask for as much as possible.
Absolutely.
And my wife doesn't give me any.
She used to a little bit like Teddy Roosevelt. So, I'll, he'll charge it. No, we, we came to ask for some money, and you asked me what we thought we should have, and I told some of my thoughts. Doesn't have to be that, but we would like some help.
Okay. Is this something the board wants? When are you, when are you planning on doing this project? When do you?
That would be down in the spring, so, okay, once it crosses out.
Okay. Is this something the board wants to think about for, till the next meeting? Come back with a recommendation, or?
I guess that, just a question. What's the, what's, I guess, the lifespan then, like, on the sign, like, supposed to be made out of, I guess?
Well, we need to hold a semi can run into that and not hurt it. The second semi, well, it would hurt it a little bit, as I explained it. This is tough stuff.
It's the same stuff they put on the outside of the Union State Bank, that EPIS with the stucco type material on it, sure.
It's pretty long, you know?
Yeah.
That, that's expensive part is, that part. Sixty dollars a second, I think, when they spray that, then.
Yeah.
And then we, the, the leads are gonna give us some new, new flags, and, um, we wanna, we wanna put the flags up too, so that, we got one at the senior center.
Yeah.
So, we'd like the American flag and the state flag up front.
Absolutely.
And they're gonna be installed. That's all included, so, you know, and there will be solar lights at home.
Okay.
Now, and the other thing, I would like new pants.
That's the style.
Yeah, that's in you.
And I want permission to do some dumpster diving, because this shoe is wearing out, and this one is still good.
You're in your full fashion statement right now. What's, what's, what the board wanna do?
Give me a new shoe.
Let's table it till the next meeting, think about it a little bit more.
Okay.
If you guys don't worry.
Are you all right with that, before you wait till next meeting, guys?
We are having our meeting next Tuesday, so if we could have an answer by that time, would be next.
We will do our best.
And, and like, if I didn't ask for enough, it would just add it.
Just go ahead and do that, okay.
Does everyone keep? Do you wanna keep that?
Yeah.
Well, you can keep that, yeah. And I wanna show you something that I got in Christmas time with Jeremy Mailer. He's in the Air Force. And we can put in this stuff in a showcase, the supply that was flown in a U-2 plane.
It's pretty neat.
It's, it's to the American League, and I think it's both the city and Hazen. They're important.
Very nice.
And I'd like to have permission to, in that showcase, to clean one shelf out, I'll, I'll put some on top, and we can put our stuff in there.
Absolutely.
And I thought that was pretty neat that he did that. I wanted to do that, but Jeremy, he's living in Fargo. Pretty hard to get to go.
Yeah.
George, when we get this money, will you be able to get it in your Volkswagen, or should I bring my van? I can put it in the pocket. They're not gonna get any.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you coming in, and we will get back to you soon as we can. All right, takes us down to...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Eight A, land division, Mr. Gawain, he's out here, is he? Okay, Shannon, feel free to explain.
Yeah, I'm going to be in the construction. And what he's, he's part of the animal land, which is kind of northwest Hazen, west of Melua, that pasture by the Roche's Bowl over there. He's planted the land out, and he's sending off parcels on the south side of Crick to those private owners.
So, the landowners that are adjacent to those pieces there?
Yep. And what they, they basically came to us to see if they needed to do a subdivision, or if they could just sell it as individual parcels of land. And they voted to just state that just individual, from one land over to the next. So, I guess they just see their permission to allow us to do that, since it's in our incorporated lands.
Hack, what are your, what are your thoughts?
It's adjacent to our incorporated land.
Adjacent to our incorporated, yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll preface my comments by saying I'm also involved with Steve Cohen in this matter. So, I'm very familiar from that perspective. Mr. Link has been doing all the surveying for Steve Cohen.
Okay.
I, in fact, recommend to Steve that he plant it as a subdivision, because we have very old subdivision regulations dating back to nineteen eighty. But they state that land adjacent to city lots, even though it's outside of city boundaries, which this is, is within our territorial boundaries for zoning purposes and so on. And so, I was the one who recommended that to Steve, so that from this point on, this is block twenty-six A or one A, instead of one of these two-page needs and bounds descriptions of the parcel of property.
So, then basically, we just have to give our blessing on what, what is already done?
You guys would have to approve and sign off on the plan.
So, in doing that?
Mr. Link has some other comment.
So, that, that creates it as a subdivision, but it's still not part of, it's not within city limits?
Not at this time.
Right, yeah.
And by calling it a subdivision, then it doesn't fall under the?
Well, it would be a county. The county, in their records, indexes property according to its location.
Yeah.
So, they'll have a book for the city of Hazen. This property won't go in that book. This property will go into section sixteen, township one forty-six, eighty-six, or whatever the, you know, the rural areas are. But they'll put the plan in there, and then they'll start a new subdivided area within their index, so they can track each lot in that subdivision, so people can see who the owner is from this point on.
And so, he's breaking it into parts and basically selling it to the adjacent landowners.
Yes.
So, it's just becomes an addition to their existing...
To their lot. They'll own, if they lot own lot twelve, then west Hazen subdivision, block cherry six, and then they'll own lot twenty-six A in Animal Creek, or whatever it's called, subdivision, also.
They have an option of not purchasing?
What's that?
Yeah, I think he operated really reasonable, and it sounds like they're all, they're all in process of, yeah. Yeah, they're all in process of purchasing, so it's really good.
And if, that's the case, then we just need a motion to accept this?
Would they even sell that?
Yeah.
Divide it up and sell it?
We can't stop him from selling it, can we? It's not, not, now, it's...
I don't know why you want it.
No, exactly. Not at all.
But no, I don't think you could, anyway.
So, we just need a motion of approval and pack?
Yeah.
So, that should be signed off on. Anybody willing to word that?
So moved.
Motion by Hack to accept the proposed changes to the...
Subdivision plan.
Subdivision plan, yes.
All right, motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion.
I only had, I guess, questions like last fall, since this was, you know, it's brought up. You know, I, I know it's, at this time, I know that we can't, well, that answers the question, but I mean, are, you know, allow people to build on this, that property? So, then, on the back lot, which is gonna be on the crick, you know, I mean, is there gonna be? So, well, it's still probably...
Well, I don't know if we can stop if it's not in the city.
Well, we still have, they still have your limited permit, and then you guys would just say no to it.
They would have to issue the conditional use permit, one thing.
I believe right now that property zone is egg.
So, yeah.
And until it changes use, it remains an egg property.
Right.
So, it would be up to any individual owner of one of those new lots to request a change of zoning before they could do anything like that. And I don't, it wouldn't qualify as, well, unless you annexed it and started extending services and so on. I mean, the likely, and the lots are very small.
Would, would these still fall under the auspices that because they're so many feet from city limits, that, that they're still subject to, if, if they were to, for instance, go to the county for a conditional use permit to build something on there, a home or something?
Wouldn't it go to the county, the county? It's within your territory of jurisdiction, of course.
Well, I guess my question is, so can, do they have to follow our rules too? They can't put pigs on it, or chickens on it, or?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's our, okay. Because it is agriculture, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
All right, we have a, we have a motion by hack. Second by Casey. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Hack.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. Down to reports, I have nothing this time, water sewer. Streets. Cemetery, Dave?
Steve? I'm having normal maintenance, needs to be done on our, our John Deere loader and a lot of time I start, cold start up in the morning. It has a slight engine miss, so I've talked with, gone to the service manual and I've talked with audio equipment and they feel it probably, for the hours that are on it, then it's probably due for a new set of injectors or taken apart and the most cleaned, whichever would be more cost effective. If that doesn't cure it, on the back page, they show the injector pump might have to be taken off, sent to Bismarck and rebuilt. And the pricing is there, twelve hundred and sixty, hundred dollars.
You have this image up here?
No, that's on the street sweeper. And then the, the service manual, it also sent that vibration damper on the engine, should be changed every forty-five hundred hours, it's like ninety-one hundred dollars on it and it's never been changed. One of the issues, if it doesn't change or, and that part would fail, you could possibly bust the engine crankshaft, which.
Let's change it.
Yeah. And he's got each one of the items, I talked to them itemized on this sheet. So if you add it all up, total cost, including if the injector pump would have to come off, it'd be like sixty-seven hundred dollars.
Forty hours we got on that?
It's got nine thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Is that our newer?
That's the John Deere, that's the older one.
Okay, the case.
The case is the new one. The available justice supposed to be done at every two thousand hours, well, it's five hundred dollars over. And we've usually stayed pretty close to having that done every three, twenty-five hundred dollars or whatever. And this is just some other issues that are showing up or whatever, so.
What's, what's downtime for?
They figure maybe three days.
Oh.
They actually stock a lot of the parts for out there, so. It's gonna be like three days and this, this time of year downtime wouldn't bother us unless we get some really big blizzard or something, but we could.
Well, that's supposed to be a little bit more of a downtime if we have to rebuild that.
Then you figure out maybe a week, the ten days if the pump would have to be sent out, but it's pretty hopeful that just the injectors will probably take care of it. So nine thousand dollars on a set of injectors, in fact, is pretty good license amount.
So is that a motion?
I made a motion that we proceed with this vote. And if the injector pump needs to be removed and rebuilt, send it down to Mid-Maine East for the amount of, what do you call it?
Sixteen. I don't everything up with the pump rule, it's a sixteen hundred, comes to six thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
What's this, you know, what's this thing worth, do you think?
I never got in on it when they walked the case, Danny and George were still here and how many hours the Kate or Kat had on when they traded after, it wasn't very different, I don't know.
We were kinda, kinda just like talking about it too. And an old one, I think I had like about ten thousand dollars. And I think we sold it for what, like fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand we sold it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then on the new one, it was like a hundred thousand, yeah, something like that, ninety something.
So we traded it or we sold it?
We sold it all.
We did.
I just wonder if it's worth putting that money into, but obviously it is.
It's in good shape, I mean, the fins and bushings and all that stuff for steering, I mean, that seems like a real tight machine, yeah.
Well, the John Deere is the one that used the.
Still the old one, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion by hack.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. Any else you want to add here?
Well, picture up there is a heartbreak actuator on our Johnston sleeper. Has been leaking for the last couple of years or whatever, so. I sent three of our guys last week down to maintenance and operations school for street sweeper. So I had them price this unit to replace it and it comes in at one thousand four hundred and nine dollars and eighty-five cents plus freight. So I made a call to the Corps of Fluid Power in Bismarck and I sent them this photograph. And they feel they can disassemble that and rebuild it for anywhere from maybe three to five hundred dollars. If they take it apart and it's non-rebuildable, we'd have maybe a hundred dollars in it in disassembly and inspection. So I have the unit off the sleeper now and I was gonna send it to Bismarck to put its fluid power on the city bus on Wednesday. And if it's not fixable, we're, we're stuck at the fourteen hundred dollar mark or whatever, so I wanted to bring that to your guys' attention.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna start using that thing pretty heavily pretty soon.
Yeah, that was a good school, guys came back pretty excited and we're gonna look at to get it all going through, get it all, these stuff, put it up and ready for the season.
They have a motion that we proceed with that as well.
Okay, motion by hack.
Second.
Second by Miller. Discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right. Any else, Jason? Okay, good.
Last fall, Tim Schwartz was gonna replace that asphalt over by the dig by Steve Cohen's and we didn't get it done, so I talked with him here the other day and it sounded like he was still honored the same quote that he gave you guys last year.
True.
And we were looking at doing that probably here within the next two weeks with permitting.
As I said, hopefully let all the runoff taken care of first.
Yeah. And make sure the process is okay, so give him like a two-day lead time and get all that tore out.
Yeah, we, okay, thanks for staying on that with him, cause we approved that and I know the weather was an issue, I, so we gotta get that.
Yeah, I told him I want to get it done before he started all his other big projects, cause we get him to peel away, so this is actually first on the list, other committee.
All right, thanks for reminding. My ass, Bessie?
Um, I attended the ambulance meeting on Monday and, um, other than runs are down, which is good and bad, better, good. Um, and there are always a few volunteers here, anybody has any medical training?
I'll tell you how to firsthand experience riding that thing a couple of weeks ago when those people are amazing.
They are.
They are, they do a great job.
Yeah. Well, that would be it.
Okay, police fire.
We had a staff meeting last week and our chief introduced me to their calls for service reporting program. And it's, uh, it's very nice, detailed, basically gives a record of all the calls that come in and are dispatched out for our officers taking in the city limits and beyond. It's interesting how much activity takes place in a small town like ours. Good, good information.
Anything else, Dan? Buster?
Hey.
Okay.
You gonna, cause I'm old, I'm gonna sit down. I wanna visit with you a little bit, a little bit more about the North Dakota Moves project, we, demonstration project. We've had a couple of, of committee meetings internally here now and, and we sent off our information to the folks that we're going to be working with. So basically what we did is we identified three areas in town that we really would like to focus on. Now, whether or not we'll be able to focus on all of them as part of this project, we're thinking that a couple of them are probably small enough where we might think they're such good ideas, we just wanna do them ourselves anyway, okay? So the, so basically the first project that we're looking at, we thought that we would do is, we thought we'd like to see if we could run a bike path on Main Street, pardon me? Bike lane. Bike lane, excuse me, out of that lane, bike lane. Uh, on Main Street, starting at West Dakota Lumber and going all the way out to the corner on the Heritage, Heritage Park side, okay? And part of that, of course, the idea behind that is, is we think that that might improve some of the activity once that park is up and running and going, okay? Uh, and realize now that we have the choice of, uh, when they actually do the demonstration project, maybe in a day, a week, a couple of weeks or a month. And so what we've kind of thought about was as well, we're gonna go, have to go through the effort of setting it up. We'd like to see it set up for at least a month, okay? Uh, and as a reminder, uh, we have two engineers that are coming out of Minneapolis that are working with the Department of Transportation on this project. And then we're also, we also have two folks from the Department of Transportation that will actually be here helping us with the project itself. So we're, we're gonna have some really good expertise on the project. So that, that's one piece. Well, as we were talking about that further and thinking about maybe some long-range stuff eventually. Another factor that we had talked about is, is that we don't really have any crosswalks going across from the north side of Main Street to the south side, okay, designated crosswalks. And so what we thought about doing, and we're, and we're thinking about, talking about a, a bike lane. We thought maybe it'd be nice to put a cut across uh, in the George Washington Park, okay? Coming from Third Street, I believe it's Third Street, okay? And put, and then of course, on each side of Main.
So you're thinking from like, you know, it's the driveway area?
Yeah, further east probably. And we're talking a little further east, just east of the monument possibly is what we talked about. With curb cuts, ADA curb cuts, you know, so you could go down or whatever, and then also nice markings as crosswalks. That'd be one. The other crosswalk, we thought, we, we, what we would do is because there is a curb cut already in the parking lot of Joy Dental. Uh, and connect that directly with the sidewalk that goes into the library, okay?
Is this rent money, Buster?
Well, we'll, yes and no.
Okay.
We'll probably have to find some money for the, you know, whatever. You know how those projects work. But, uh, so that's kind of one project that we're gonna have them looking at, okay? The second project that we identified, and maybe that's more than one project, that might be two projects, but anyway, I threw it all into one. The second project that we identified is the Christmas tree down by Jensen Jewelry. Is possibly, uh, remove that, take that out of there, close that area in in terms of concrete and maybe get some, uh, make seeing area down there or whatever. Uh, there is a big tree there yet, I'm not sure what kind of tree that is, Dave, do you know what that is?
John knows what that one's called.
Yeah.
Things of that.
But we were thinking that, you know, and that maybe that might provide some ambiance for folks in summer months if they might go out and have lunch or whatever, you know? The other thing about it is, of course, uh, if we could, you know, eventually if we could ever, if we'd ever become a biking city. You know, the city parking lot is there, you can have some bike racks there or whatever, that'd be really nice for downtown stuff, okay? So that was the second project we're gonna have them look at. Not probably quite as involved as that for a first step.
Look, tie back up, you know, that, if you've walked around that area by Jensen Jewelry down there, we took a tree out of there this past year and that concrete is breaking up bad, it is really uneven and I think, you know, just the shovel roots from that pine tree will probably not make that any better.
Yeah.
So I think if, if we do get rid of that pine tree, I think it needs, that whole triangle there needs to be prime new, new, new concrete or asphalt or what, what product concrete? Cause it's, it's in, it's in rough shape anyhow.
So that's the second project. And then the third project, which is, which extends out, I'd say out further from downtown. And realize that part of this North Dakota Moves demonstration project is really, the focus of it was really to tie in with the governor's downstreet initiative, Main Street initiative, downstreet, Main Street initiative. So that's why we were looking at these two projects over here, okay? Well, then I brought on Melissa Markwart, who asked to, I, her name was mentioned and she said, yes, I would love to be on that with, on your committee. And she says, have you ever thought about the crosswalk north of the underpass? That is in North Star one and two, I could cross it between one and, I think it's one and two, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Tenth Street.
Tenth Street, yeah, on the highway, as you're heading north to the lake, that's how I refer to it, heading north to the lake. You don't have a stop sign there, you just go, the other three are freeway stops. Well, the idea was, is that, we talked about, we should really put in designated crosswalks that are, that really stand out. And you know, we started with the one, the east-west one, but we said, well, why don't we do the north-south as well? So I think that's probably what.
They just start dressing them up, taking.
Yep. And then, one of the things that I had originally thought was, was well, I never quite understood why that was only a three-way stop and it was never a four-way. And I thought, well, maybe it should be a four-way. Uh, I don't know, uh, but, uh, I, I.
I think the distance between Highway two hundred and the stop was too, too short. I think that's just, I think it backed up too.
We know, I guess, I don't know.
And I, I guess the thing that I was thinking is, is that from the standpoint, you know, there's a lot of early morning kid traffic there going to school and late afternoon kid traffic going home from school. And of course, they use the underpass to get underneath there.
There's slower traffic from there to the west.
Yeah, and so I don't know, I mean, it's, you know, and I'll just speak for myself. I mean, uh, sometimes it's confusing. You know, I mean, if you're not familiar with it. I mean, normally you go to places where you might have two stop signs. Very often you have three or it'll be four. But whatever, that's, eventually that, that'll be your guys' call in terms of what you have to do with it. But those are basically the three projects and the way this works now is, is I've sent off information to them, they're analyzing the information, uh, and they're coming back on the twenty-fourth of August, oh, not August, boy, where am I at, April? Uh, and then we're, they're gonna spend a day with us and we're gonna go on, onsite and take a look at those things and see what their recommendations are. And then we know, for instance, that it's gonna take some money. Uh, so I'm probably, I am going to, uh, look at probably applying for a grant through AARP, which is the Livables Communities Grant. Uh, possibly, uh, that, that piece going across the park, the sidewalk over in that area and the curb cuts and whatever, maybe we might be able to get that paid for through some grant money. I don't know. Another thought I had, but I wouldn't hang my hat on it, was that I was thinking that maybe, uh, the finer project might have some leftover. I don't know if it will or not, even though at one time we had talked about maybe making that bike path part of the driveway through there. Cause one of the things I think what we realize now is that driveway going north is not wide enough. So this spring, that's probably gonna have to be widened in the curve that goes through there. So that's already kind of, we've talked about that, but, so those are, that's kind of the idea in terms of what we're looking at doing. And the street out here is forty, forty feet, so I'm not sure what a bike lane is, four, five feet, I'm guessing, or probably more than five feet, probably five or six feet. I'm not sure if that would mean that, uh, you'd wanna restrict traffic for parking. Uh, I, I not, you know, those things are, maybe we'll get more advice from those folks.
There might be a dual.
When they come out.
Yeah.
Or, or traffic is restricted to parking during that period on the north side. I'm not restricted on the north side, but the south side. So. Questions?
No, I love, I love those ideas, Buster, I think it's, those, those little things are what's gonna make our community. places when, when people are looking at Bristow County where they want to live. I think those little things like that are going to mean a lot and I, I, I love it. Goes hand in hand with what I want to do with painting, you know, the power poles on Main Street with different murals and stuff, so. I, keep going, let us know how, how we're proceeding and what we need to do and, you know, the money aspect of it, obviously, that's, do what we can, but see how the grants go.
One of the things to kind of long range, I think thinking a little further down, down the road, how does that sound? It would be nice, we had talked about tying in the bike path from Senex north of the highway. Where you come across, coming down, uh, the street, take the right at the school. And then, I don't know the street numbers, but then head down the street where steeples are on. That would take you directly in line with Pioneer. And that's why then we, and then you jog left and then you catch that cut across and that would take you right into the park. And that cut across, what we're trying to do is, is it would, it would go in, uh, just about perpendicular to the playground. The playground is off there, so. So that's what they, I think the future long range would be. The idea, of course, is to get people downtown, okay? And so, but, uh, you know, as we get further on down the road, probably what's going to happen is we'll probably be looking at, uh, I'm thinking that we probably need to have that everything wrapped up by probably August, definitely September at the latest. We're sup, we're supposed to, we'll have to do some analyzing of what we see and those kinds of things. And then, so hopefully we'll be able to give you a report afterwards and so. And, and Pat, from the legal side of things, you could kind of think about, I don't know what we, I don't know if there's any particulars that we have to be concerned upon, about putting a bike lane, temporary bike lane.
They're just pulling on Main Street and Bismarck. How, how much more, you know, if there's a main, bike lane on Main Street and Bismarck, they reduce their traffic lanes, I think we could do it here.
Okay, any questions on that? Nope, okay.
Thanks, Buster.
No, the only other thing I have to, you know, I just haven't heard from, we have not heard from USDA on the hotel. That's, it's been sitting on there last. Or whatever, and it's pretty frustrating, it was the same, so, thank you.
NDIRF Annual Meeting.
Just to make you aware that it is coming up, not real soon, but in the near future. If anybody wants to attend, let me know, otherwise we will add a later meeting, decide on proxy if you want to do the project.
Where they have you?
Yeah, in Bismarck, at the Red Core.
Okay, thank you. Eleven A, election agreement. Well, we've talked this one to death, it's been in the paper, it's been, Monty and I have done a meetings and what's done is done, I guess, so we just need to sign the agreement form now, Monty, basically, and.
If we want them to produce our ballots for us to be read by the auto reader, yes, we do.
Okay, and I assume that's what we want to do, yeah. Okay, that's a, I'm not going to beat, beat the horse, but just here to taste me, but anyhow. We need to make a motion to enter the agreement. Monty?
Yes.
Okay. We do need a motion to enter the election agreement with the county. Motion by Wolf. Motion by Wolf. Any or second? Any or second? Second by Hack. Discussion. Discussion.
If this gets voted down, Mr. Mayor. Refresh our memories again, Monty. What, I mean, we'd probably be looking at committee, hire a committee.
We would have to.
Tree election board, doing the training.
Canvas.
Canvassing the votes after the election, preparing our own ballots. Basically would be a hand that we have all the ballots. Which, it's doable, we've done it for special elections.
I mean, let's, let's, can a guy put a dollar figure out something like that? Time, money?
It's going to take time and money and, and a lot more energy out of Monty's office, I guess.
You'd be a few thousand dollars.
Pat?
Well, first of all, what you've been told is the county's opinion as to how costs should be shared and what they could or could not do. We don't know what Secretary of State or the Trade General's Office might say about that. But the other thing was, when this originally came up, the only thing I was suggesting is that you reserve a right to identify your own polling places. It didn't mean you had to exercise the right. If you exercise the right to choose your own polling place, then you would have to agree to share costs either according to law or by agreement with the county. That was all I was recommending initially. And, uh, I don't know, somehow it seems to have ballooned a little bit away from that original thought. And, and now it sounds like the county's giving you no alternative but to take this or leave it.
Well, we can still retain our polling site, but if we don't use it, what good does it do?
Well.
I, I agree, I think it'd be.
No, you wouldn't even elect to choose your polling site.
Oh.
You, you would just follow this, because this is automatically renewing agreement unless you pull out of it. So if you ever decide to, that's be your method, I mean, you would still have the right to choose a polling place. You just have to pull out of this agreement before December thirty-first of the year before the election. And if you withdraw from the agreement, I'm sure the county would send you another one anyway.
And just reminder that it, it is just this coming year, following will be in hazen, Buell will not have the location.
Every, every other year.
That's what, that's.
Every other election.
Every election site. Again, it's not the most convenient for our citizens, I understand, and I think we'll agree on that, but.
But there are options.
There are options, absolutely.
Mail-in.
The mail-in, we're going to.
The buses will take you over.
Busing, absolutely.
We're trying to make it as convenient as possible
Yeah.
for those that don't want to drive over there. And it's, it's not like we're talking you driving for an hour, it's ten minutes and you're over there and. And next poll, uh, election, they'll have to come up here.
And that's, that'll be the big election, too.
Right.
So then, uh, probably I guess figure we'll save, uh, twenty thousand dollars.
You know, we, Monty and I never really got a clear answer from them on that. It was very vague.
A lot of it is, uh, people working and they have to print more ballots because they have to have enough for Buell and Hazen. Because you don't know where people are going to vote, so if there's ten thousand people voting, you have to have ten thousand each spot. I'm guessing that's part of the cost.
No, you don't need ten thousand each spot.
No, but how are you going to know if, because Buell could come over here and vote, couldn't they? If you had polling in Hazen and Buell?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so you don't know where everyone would go vote.
There's still only so many voters in each location, so I mean, if there's five thousand eligible voters in Buell, you have five thousand ballots.
Yeah.
I see we get a reshoot. And we'll see how it goes. Any more discussion? We have a motion by Wolf, second by Hack. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye. Totally respect your name. All right, City Hall, exterior improvements.
We had talked about the cemented roof on the south side. At that time, all we had was a proposal from Pride Construction. As I, as I warned you, I did get a proposal from Winkler Construction. The difference was in the square footage, if you break down their square footage on price per square foot, they're both at six dollars per square foot. I never, I didn't get a hold of both of them to figure out what they had measured. I'm assuming one of them had measured south of the sidewalk, current sidewalk, doing the entire boulevard all the way out to the street. But either way, they're both at six dollars per square foot, so if you run a weight and I can try and get a hold of them again, how else do we decide, well, what do we want, what do we want for scope work? Do we want the, the larger square footage? And if that's the case, we just go back to, to Winkler, see if they would match that and then, I don't know.
They're matching in price, though.
They're matching in price, but, but the scope is different between the two projects. So either we, we decide based upon the project. But if they're both the same, then I don't know how you, how you differentiate from, from a voting standpoint, look a point. I don't know. And then you can take in all the other conditions into consideration, any past dealings with them, any quality of work issues or anything like that. Just like any medium pressure. Personally, we had, our assumption when I had business with Jerry was that it would only go to the sidewalk, not the grass on the south side of the sidewalk. We would leave that grass.
Okay, so we're proceeding.
Is that how Jim did that? Or he did concrete all the way to the curb?
I'm thinking he went all the way to the curb because there's two hundred and some square foot difference between the bids. And when I talked to Winkler Construction, they measured just the area where the pole is, nothing south.
You clarify that with Tim.
We're going to wait until the next meeting, they're not going to be pouring concrete in the next week. Let's see, that's the next meeting.
Thank you. Speaking of exterior improvements, you know, this east wall here, too, is starting to look really shabby after the door, rusty. Looks like crap and I think just the side needs some dressing up, too, on, on, on this side of the building for sure. So if you guys would take a peek at that here in this week or two and just let me know your thoughts, like, maybe look into something down the road.
Could we just do somewhere?
We'll put the siding over the old shingled area.
Right.
Two years ago.
All right, twelve A, authorizing resolution for transit grant for two thousand nineteen.
Uh, the Transit Operating and Administration Grant is due by May first. We're not anticipating any capital purchases, buses, vans, anything this year. So basically this gets the process going, authorizes me to answer questions once we submit the map and most types of things. The actual grant paperwork I'll bring into the next meeting for you to, so you have an idea of what we're looking at. Grant itself.
So they, they take action in the next meeting?
Can they, no, or later?
No, they'll take action now.
And the motion would be to authorize you to, to carry out the conversation and? Yeah. So.
Motion by Pillar?
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye, motion carried. Then down to twelve B, um, equalization meeting will be held the second Tuesday of April, on the tenth, uh, at the City Hall. And Shannon will be the emcee of that fun meeting.
Only sent out thirteen letters, so.
Thirteen, okay, all right.
Post maybe just.
That's not bad. You had any responses yet? Okay.
It was mostly, mostly garages, couple of new houses. In addition, a shed.
Okay.
A deck. So it's not a big deal.
All right, Casey.
So then I guess, uh, uh, like, overall then, on the values, where do they?
Other than the new homes, those, you know, they went from just land value to unit value. But, you know, if you had a, like this guy built a garage, it was twenty thousand dollar increase in his property. So, yeah, a debt was five thousand, most of them pretty, pretty minor. Garages were around thirty thousand.
You know, but I mean, it's, uh, overall, you know, I guess, citywide, you know, I mean, I mean.
Oh, um, it was a three percent, I think. So everybody's there to go up a tiny bit, but not enough to get the lawyers.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Yes.
Okay. Monty, do you have something to ask?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thirteen, approval of the bills.
Anything I'd like to eat, I laid a few new ones on the table right after the day. First of, first of the month, they're all coming in.
Motion approved.
Motion by Hack to approve the bill. Second by Wolf, discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar. Stern.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye. Want to carry, meeting adjourned. Girls, thanks for.